Good evening and welcome to the Milford Select Board Meeting of April 22, 2024, at 6:00 PM in Room 3 of Town Hall. Our first agenda item tonight is the signing of the warrant. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign the warrant.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. The next agenda item is the approval of our regular session meeting minutes from April 8, 2024.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the regular session minutes from April 8, 2024.
I second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous as well. And we have one more set of minutes. We have approval of the executive session minutes from April 8, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the executive session minutes of April 8, 2024. I will recuse myself from the vote because I have recused myself from the meeting.
And I make a motion to accept the minutes.
And I would second that and make that unanimous.
Right.
Okay. Next agenda item is a public hearing. We have a public hearing this evening for Milford Hospitality LLC Doing Businesses, Rail Trail Flatbread Company. It's an amendment to an all-alcoholic beverage license and the alteration of the premises.
Great.
And like all Department Head Review Forms, I will read this for a second. Can you, uh, please?
My name is Kareem Elgamaal, one of the owners of Milford Hospitality.
So this is Milford Hospitality LLC Doing Businesses, Rail Trail Flatbread Company. The Department Head Review Form, the Building Commissioner, no issues. The premise has approval, accommodations and accessible for permitted outdoor dining. The town planners report violations exist to zoning site/plan approval, parking lot changes, metal container placement and dumpster relocation. Tax collector, no outstanding taxes. Town treasurer, there is no liens. Fire chief, no objections. Police chief approved and the board of health has approved as well. Rick, the question I have for you is, what is that? The town planner, it says violate-
Yeah, let me just elaborate. I know Kareem can, too. We've talked to Larry, I've talked to Kareem. They need to do two things. First of all, the issue of the dumpster has been resolved. So that's done.
Okay.
It's just not reflected on Larry's report.
Sure.
The other thing they're going to have to do, and I've talked with Larry, they're going to have to file an amended site plan just for the parking lot revisions. And they're going to have to file for a special permit for the location of the metal container placement. That's what they want to do. So we've talked about that. Kareem says he and his people are going to be doing that forthwith. I've talked with Larry. I'm going to ask the board, ask him, Kareem, to keep me in the loop and obviously how we keep in the loop with the town planner, should you wish to approve what's before you tonight. And basically, it's to do a formal alteration of-
Okay, so we are addressing-
We have the temporary one already, as we call it.
Okay, yes.
A meeting, maybe, I don't know, two, three meetings, or three meetings, unless you-
Okay.
But that's the status and that's why you see what you see on the report.
Okay, let me just, Kareem, go ahead if you want to do your presentation or any questions that you-
I didn't have a presentation. I mean, the application is to alter the premise now that we've opened and we have a patio that is safe to sit outside on and all that. That's really the goal here today. It's a very important piece for us, for our business, to have something nice to offer in the summer. With regards to the town planner's notes, everything that was just said, I'm in agreement with. We do plan to file an amendment to the site plan. And, you know, up until last week, we didn't even know that a special permit was required for the container that's out there. We store firewood in that. It's kind of part of our design, you know, but I understand that it is a metal container and a storage, so we will request a special permit in order to keep that.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No questions?
Yeah, we're just going to ask Kareem, that metal container, that's a store like you says, wood, for like a wood burning stove or something like that?
Our ovens where we cook our flatbreads.
Ovens and all that other things. And the site plan is offset, too. And like we were mentioning before, the last time, the last meeting we had when Rick, I guess, had the public hearing on that via Zoom, and we all agreed that, you know, that we're, this is a new establishment here and it's a very, it's a credit to our downtown. And it's also, when you have outdoor seating, you're also increasing the seating capacity, which also could possibly increase your profits and whatnot. And like I said, this board here is very friendly to our downtown businesses, especially when it comes to improving that, and that's what we're very happy about. And I have no problem, Mr. Chair, of going along with what Rick said, is approving this until these other issues are corrected.
Okay. Tom?
I think they've made efforts to, you know, as far as moving the dumpsters, and you're dealing with a public safety issue. You have a dumpster there. If it catches fire, it's close to the building. So, you know, I think they've gone out of their way to fence it in, where you don't find that at every establishment, you know? So they're dealing with, you know, whether it be, I know, I've been through that law a number of times, not only to go to the restaurant, but to cut through to go to the mailbox. So it's a quick cut through. But aside from that, is I also notice that their dumpsters, they secure them. So you're dealing with the public health issues as well. So I commend them for everything they're doing. As far as outdoor seating, I've been in favor of it right along. I, if there's one good thing that came out of COVID, it's outdoor seating. I believe that it clearly attracts client's help. If the business is acting responsibly and not, you know, disrupting the neighbors, which they're not, I think it truly is an attraction, not just for the residents of this town, but for the residents of all of the towns around us. And it's proven, all you have to do is look at their establishment in Hudson, as well as the other businesses. All you have to do is take, go up to Marlboro, and I can name one place after the other. So I'm fully in favor of it. And, Mr. Chairman, you know, with that said, I think that any of these issues, they've shown themselves to be hugely responsible in communicating with the town as well. So I would make a motion that we allow the application to alter the premises, updating the current floor plan for the existing restaurant, for the expansion of the front patio, back patio and dining room seating on the second floor. This will add 3,514 square feet of dining area on the second floor, two patios of 1,650 square feet and 800 square feet, and add a second bar on the back patio, which they would be required to do, and that's why they're altering the liquor license as well. So that's my motion, that we approve that which they set forth in the application to the ABCC.
Okay, this being a public hearing, before I ask for a second on that, is there anybody in the general audience that's here from the public on this public hearing matter?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Sure.
Come on, come right up front.
Because the microphones are there, so people can hear you.
Steve Bowden, one of the properties I own in Milford is 11-13 Congress Street. It's called the R&amp;L Realty Trust, owned it for 30 years or something. And behind my property is the drive-through, the old drive-through for the bank. And it's, I have a couple of concerns. I've been to, I used to live in Sudbury years ago, and I went to the Rail Trail many, many times in Hudson. Love the restaurant. My concern is that it's, it's looked better. It's kind of trashy. It's kind of fallen down over the years. Is that going to be, first of all, is that, did you, when you purchased the bank property, is that part of the property? And secondly, what's going to happen with that? It's, you know, when you talk about driving through or walking through, people go through there all the time and throw trash and so forth and so on. So that was my main concern with that little appendage area, part of the big property, the parking lot, what's going to happen with that?
Do you feel that's a question that you can answer?
I can, I will try. I just want to clarify the area you're talking about. Is that where there's like a drive-through ATM?
The old drive, no, not, yeah, the drive-through ATM by Exchange Street, yeah.
I want to make one thing clear. I am the owner, one of the owners of the Rail Trail Flatbread Company, but I, we do not own the property. So some of these matters are with the owner of the property.
Who is?
It's-
I don't know who the owner is.
I'm trying to remember the official name of the company. It's AMPM or something.
So you're a lessee?
I am a lessee.
Right.
You're leasing out the old Rockland Trust building?
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, I thought you bought it, sorry. I thought you bought all the building, the property and the lot.
We don't have rights to that area. And it's blocked off. But I will say this, we want to make it beautiful. So there was-
It's unused is the biggest shame, you know? I mean, it's quite a bit of property. It's just sitting there unused and has been for a long time.
I think now that we're there, hopefully we'll start to see some activity and planning around it. I think the first phase was just to get us in there, you know, open the restaurant. There are some leaves, I've noticed, the last time I was out there, some cleanup to be done.
Dead trees, leaves, trash, you know?
There was already a lot cleaned up, but there's still the final mile thing. Trust me, we, when people come and you see that back patio open, we're going to put flowers back there. The last thing we want is people sitting in the patio.
That's what I was going to say.
We get the best parking lot in the city. It's great, it's a great property. It's just been unused, you know, for a long, long time.
And I'll add some comments to the dumpster area, too. Right now, that is a temporary fence. We were following the suggestions and recommendations.
Sure.
And we plan to have something even more permanent, hopefully moved a little bit away from making things more sightseeing, more beautiful, that's wherever we can. But you, you know, be happy to give you my contact information, should you see anything or need anything changed back there.
Who is the owner of record of the property?
I don't know off the top of my head.
I'd have to one that's, the other town-
You could go on Town G I F, we could do that.
I just assumed that you had bought the property. I didn't know otherwise.
So if you go on the town of Milford, you just put Patriot Properties-
Patriot Properties and address.
You know, but Rick, if we could take a look and figure out who the landlord is, you know, the owner of the property, and maybe you reach out to them so that they work with-
Do something with it.
They can work with the folks at Rail Trail because-
We can swap info before we go, then we'll talk.
Good. Again, being a public hearing, Chris, is anybody on the public hearing?
We only have one person on there, actually, I have a schedule, I think.
I think they're scheduled for another matter.
Oh, okay. Okay, so nobody is on?
No, I'm good.
Okay, and nobody else? Okay.
Thank you.
Have a second on that motion?
I have a second.
And I would make that unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
All the best with that. I think it's going to make a big difference.
Okay, next agenda item is scheduled appointments. We do not-
Don't have to wait in line.
We've got another hearing here.
All the best.
Now, we don't have any scheduled appointments for this evening.
Nope.
Our next agenda item is Town Administrator's Report.
Yeah, very simple tonight. It's actually two items, kind of a repeat. I neglected, and I informed you that we received the Tree City USA application proposal. I neglected to thank Parks Director Jimmy Azumbe, Tree Lee and Chuck Lemuel. They're the ones that have spurred this effort the past six years to get that approved from the Department of Conservation and Recreation. And I do want, again, and Paul, you'll understand, a comprehensive plan treaty meeting again is going to be May 13, 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM. We'll open up the Town Hall. We're going to be reviewing production of comprehensive plan. Residents and citizens will be able to ask questions, give opinions as to what we should or should not be doing. So I just want to reflect people on that. I'll probably say it one more time in our next meeting.
Sure.
We're trying to get people there, we want some input.
Good.
And that's all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any questions?
No, thank you, Rick.
Tom, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Rick. And next agenda item is Old Business. Under Old Business, we have, again, the Town Administrator, annual town meeting warrant.
The warrant's there, and you approved it last time.
Yeah.
I put it there. You do not have to do anything if you want to. Talk about it on articles. You will have additional meetings for them to do that, but it's there for whatever you might want to do.
Now, we have gotten a warrant in one of our previous packets, but this is the official-
That's the official signed warrant that the town clerk will be posting in the near future.
Okay. Any questions for the board?
No.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next agenda item is New Business, and under New Business, First Order of Business is, again, we go back to the Town Administrator, renewal of the second-hand pool tables and bowling alley license.
Yeah, there's just a number of licenses there. It's an annual renewal. So we need a vote from the board to renew the second-hand dealer and pawnbroker licenses, pool table license, and this one bowling alley license.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve renewal of second-hand antique dealer and pawnbroker licenses for bars of jewelry and gifts, Nathan's Jewelry, TJ Cafe and Games, MV Jewelry and more.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous.
Chairman, I make a motion that we renew the pool table license for the fun zone of Milford LLC DBA pins.
Second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, unanimous.
Chairman, I make a motion that we renew the bowling alley license 2024, Milford LLC Doing Businesses pins.
Second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous as well. Thank you very much. Gentlemen. Okay, next item under New Business is Paymore Requesting a Second-Hand License.
I think they might be the individuals that are on-
Yes, Chris.
Hello, yes, I'm online.
Hi. Hi, go ahead. Are you Chris?
I am, sir.
Okay, go right ahead. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. So just a background, this is, excuse my ignorance, my first time doing this, so if I'm not clear, please let me, let me know. My wife and I have signed up for a multi-unit franchise business called Paymore. That's one word. They're a franchise company that has been around since 2011, and they specialize in the second-hand electronics market. They are not a pawnbroker of any kind. They don't loan, only provide cash for used electronics of any kind of electronics, and as well as they also sell new electronics in their retail shops. So basically, although their focus is second-hand market, they do some new products in their retail stores. And our first retail store will be in Milford, hopefully. And we were told we needed a second-hand dealers license, which brought me to this stage.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a Department Head Review Form. Again, I will read it. The Building Commissioner, recommendation is a CC Zone, allowable used building and restrooms are accessible. Town Planner is okay, no change to actual use. Tax Collector, there are no outstanding taxes. Town Treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire Chief has no objections. Police Chief, approved. And the Board of Health has no objections. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the application for a second-hand license.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve a second-hand license for Paymore located in 9 Medway Road, Unit 90.
I second that, too, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous.
Good luck. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did good.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Have a great night.
Have a good afternoon.
Yeah.
You, too.
Okay, next item is the Town Administrator requesting the appointment of a part-time custodian.
Yes, the position is, again, a part-time custodian. We advertise the town website, we did receive 47 applications. The application is reviewed by our Facilities Director, Carlos Benjamin, along with the HR Director. We are recommending Mr. Carlos Maria for the position. He has been employed for 15 years as machine operator for Century Tywood in Paulston. He's been a part-time janitorial technician for T L C Janitorial in Waltham for nine years. He lives in Milford. He has extensive experience in many, many aspects of custodial work. We believe he's also mechanically inclined, so maybe small repairs and things that he could do. Speaks fluent Portuguese, which obviously can be a benefit. If you approve, we recommend you place the grade one step one on Article 2. Now, the rate of wage is $23.11, and we would ask if you allow him to be here as early as today, because he's kind of a night shift plumber.
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the recommendation of Town Administrator to hire Carlos Maria as a part-time custodian at the rates, step and rate as suggested by the Town Administrator.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would make that unanimous. Next item under New Business is Town Administrator, again, proclamation of Arbor Day.
Yeah, each year what we did, we do a proclamation. We have it signed by the chairman as the select eight members, so all it really would ask is to sign the proclamation.
That's just not working, Chief, in your pen. The tree that's paper was made from?
Yeah, I know.
It's just required, I think, to choose, Rick.
Yes, yeah.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you very much.
You're active.
Yep. And the last item under New Business is, again, Town Administrator referencing the treasurer slash collector, tax collector appointment.
As the board knows, Terry Vines, the tax collector, is retiring. The board accepted her retirement letter at its last meeting with regret. I felt we agreed now time for the board and town to consider combining the treasurer and collector positions into a treasurer and collector position. I did advertise it. Basically, the only letter submitted of interest was from our current treasurer, Chris Pillar. I am strongly recommending Chris be appointed to the position. He's dealt with it for nine years as treasurer. He's performed a highly professional and exemplary manner. He oversees payroll, management, payroll taxes, retirement system. Remember, the bonding for the Milford Water Company, he was essential in assisting us in that. He is a certified Massachusetts municipal treasurer. He's a deep vice president for the Treasurers Association, collectors treasurer, excuse me. He has a bachelor's science degree in business administration. He's got a master's degree in business administration. I think he would seamlessly get into this position at some point if the board approves. I will have him come to a future meeting so that he can discuss with you how the operation may change in some respects.
Good.
I think that he would, he would, he would have the unwell most doubt a combined director, collector position. It should be both, I think, economically better. It should be a savings to, exactly, the payroll. So, again, I guess I have a few things about Chris. He's been, I think, just has worked very, very well in the last nine years, and that would be my recommendation. We would be able to do a contract with Chris, so I would come back at a future meeting so that we could discuss the contract. As both positions, treasurer and all contract positions, we checked on that, we can do that.
Good. Tom?
You know, I think it's a fantastic idea. You're, they, as Rick indicated, the position, you see it across other communities. It's, you know, it's a natural relationship. And Chris has done a great job. There's no question about it. Well-versed, knows what he's doing, has been instrumental, not only with the water company, Rick, but when we start to deal with properties that we take for taxes, et cetera. He, you know, he's right on top of it, and he treats people fairly, treats them with respect. You know, he knows when people are in tough times, and he doesn't push the button just to say, oh, you know, we're going to take this person's home or their land. So he, he has that compassionate side to him as well. I think that makes a lot of sense, because a lot of those properties, we're taking them, if not all of them, for tax reasons. So if he manages the taxes coming in, and I think that way he has his fingertips on things day to day. Clearly, we would have to renegotiate his contract with the new responsibilities, but as the Town Administrator indicated, we're going to save money as well. It's not just the difference between the two salaries, it's also the benefits. So in the long term, it's a significant savings for the community, but it really streamlines things and puts things in the right perspective. Not that anyone was doing a bad job. I know that, you know, Terry had a fantastic relationship with Chris and with Zach, you know, the financial people, and that they communicated very well. And, you know, I wish Terry well as she heads into retirement, you know, something she decided to do. She did a great job as a tax collector. So I would recommend, and I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, and I will listen to your comments and my colleague, Paul, but I would make a motion that we approve the recommendation of the Town Administrator to merge these two positions.
Thank you, Tom. And Mike, I do second that, too, with the reason, too, because, like I said, like Rick mentioned, too, it's not a revolutionary concept. People are, you know, different municipalities are doing that throughout the Commonwealth today. Also, you have a single person handling two different positions, so it makes them more efficient, as Tom mentioned as well. Cost savings, again, you're reducing two salaries into one. Remember, we did that, too, with the Business Director at the time, Kathy Perry, with the Assistant Superintendent of Schools, and we saved a considerable amount of money by doing that to get the same job done. And again, I guess I thank Rick for that concept as well, Tom's comments, and I definitely second that, too, as well, and I wish Terry the best as well.
Okay, before I make that unanimous, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Rick. This is another example of things that are decisions that are brought forward or made by the Town Administrator to streamline the course of business within Town Hall, to make doing or conducting business at Town Hall streamlined easier for the taxpayers of this community. And so, Rick, I just want to say, you know, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I think, I know my board members appreciate it for having the foresight to think of something like this. Again, I wish Terry the very, very best in her retirement, but it gives us an opportunity to make this adjustment, which is a major plus, not only for providing services to the residents of this community, it's also a cost savings to the community as well. And so I think that Chris is more than qualified. I think Chris will do a great job at this role, in this, in this job description. And I just wanted to say again, thank you, Rick, for taking the charge and bringing this to our attention, a critical, you know, a time when we really could make that decision. So, and with that, I'll make that motion that was made by Tom unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a second motion?
Oh, no, I did.
Well, Chris, no, no, to appoint Chris, I think-
Yeah. Oh, we need a second motion to appoint Chris. Oh, sure. Okay.
Well, I make a motion that we appoint Chris Pillar to the position that was recommended and was just approved.
Yeah, thanks.
And I would make that unanimous.
I will be back.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And that would go back to today, correct?
Actually, you really wouldn't start till July.
July 1st.
In the position.
Okay, yeah. I just want to be clear on the, I want to be clear on dates, that's all.
Okay, next agenda item is Invitation to Speak. Is anybody here? Is anybody here or online, Chris, for invitations?
We have nobody online.
And we have nobody in the audience? All right, next agenda item is correspondence. Does any member have any correspondence they've received?
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I found it very interesting that our police chief came to us, oh, it has to be more than six months ago, recommending that we approve the program where you put the yellow dot on the vehicle and you can have information within the vehicle for police officers that may stop that vehicle to deal with people that have, you know, particular disabilities that in the past two weeks, the state police came out with the exact same program to put it across the state. So great ideas really moved fairly quickly. So I want to commend Chief Robbie Tosino, you know, for bringing that forward. And it's not a bad thing to reinvent the wheel and have someone else try to do it as well. So he showed his leadership in bringing that to the community. And then you see the largest police organization in the state, the state police are doing the same thing. So I commend the chief.
Nothing, thanks, just what Tom said too. That was a very good, Tom, thank you for that. Got to bring that to our attention too. I remember, I just read that a little while ago, that the state police brought it up. And Robbie brought it up several months ago, so.
Already, and we've already had our executive session prior to the opening of the regular session meeting. So we do not have another executive session. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Chairman, I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting, the regular session.
Second that as well.
I would make that unanimous. Good night, everybody. Thank you very much for watching. Have a good rest of the week. Hopefully, the sun will come out. Thank you. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.